Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the County Board of Commissioners' Work Session. Today is July 2nd, 2020. We're glad that you're with us. We'll start out with some unfinished business. First up, a presentation of the creation of a Residential Agriculture 1.5 Corrective Zoning District by County Attorney Angela Davis and our planning and development director, Jamison Kinney. This was moved forward from June 18th, 2020 voting session as part of the Land Use Resolution Update, Residential Agriculture Lot Size Requirements Agenda. Ah, Jamison.
Thank you, Chairman.
Before we get started, let me... Is Chris in?
Yes, sir.
All right. I have no doubt in that. Well, thank you, Chairman. As you just stated, that we have moved this from the previous voting session. We're discussing creating a new Residential Agriculture Corrective Zoning Classification that was presented, given to us by our attorneys. It was drafted by the... my department, Planning and Development. The first we had to do is we had to really narrow down who and what was caught in the net, right? So what we started with was a description that was... or an Excel spreadsheet that was given to us by the tax assessors that had over 1,300 different parcels that were less than five acres and then in residential agriculture. Now, when we first started zoning, you know, everything was kind of blanked at this residential agriculture, and then we kind of narrowed down from there. So a lot of those were essentially grandfathered in to begin with. From that 1,300, we had... I removed all the ones that have plats recorded with the certificates, because if they are currently platted, the plating process is where we assess our zoning. So we removed those, and it removed a significant portion of those, and it brought that number down to 585. After that, I removed all the ones that already had residences. Generally, those are the ones that were built before 1986 and before zoning, so there's never a need for them to be platted. But if they were to come in today, we would certainly work with them on that. Also removed the ones that didn't have any deeds associated with them. There's a lot of reasons that people would split properties and not deed them and not plaid them, so, you know, we removed those as well, because those weren't deeded. Essentially, we narrowed it down to 94 different properties. Then the planning department did some spatial analysis, and we looked at those properties versus the... our future land use map and said, if they came in today, would we recommend them to be RA? We found that approximately 52 of those, give or take... we haven't gone into detail into each parcel yet, but approximately 50, roughly 50 of those would be... we would recommend them to be RA. We would recommend them to be rezoned to this residential agriculture corrective classification. The... we wrote it similar to, so it would fit in line with all of our other zoning classifications and the eligibility requirements permitting allowed accessory structures. We were a little more restrictive, as opposed to if you have five or 10 acres and you're looking for an acre and a half, especially when it comes to accessory structures. And I think at this point, we're just really going to look into what guidance on if this is something that you, the board, is wanting to push forward to a public hearing. The first public hearing would be before the planning commission this month, if y'all choose to move forward with it. I'll open up questions.
What day can that be, if it's moved? First public hearing?
First public hearing would be at the planning commission, which is the third Tuesday of... or third Tuesday of this month, 21st.
So we would be... to move this to a public hearing, you would be wanting us to move it to the voting session tonight, so that we could vote to move it to a public hearing, so it could go to them on the 21st.
Yes.
And then it would come to the board the first August?
August 6th.
August 6th?
Six.
Okay.
And I would ask for it to be moved tonight, because I got to get everything advertised for two weeks.
Right.
So that needs to be done.
Yeah, we wanted to speed this up as fast as possible, anyway, so it'd be long game. We keep going, and keep going, and keep going, so... I did have a couple of questions. Jamison and I have a discussion about this, but just want to kind of... so everybody kind of understands where we're at. So Jamison explained the part about that if it's already platted, then they have the ability to build a house on that regardless of the size. It's done been platted. So you want to go a little bit deeper detail on that?
Absolutely. So the plating stage is where we look for the zoning. And so it's... if you come in and you split a parcel, you bring it to Harmony in Planning Development, she assesses it for zoning, to see if it has the appropriate acreage and the proper size, setbacks, and everything. So that is the stage in which we assess zoning. So if it was platted before 1986, let's say, and it was before zoning, then it might be less than five acres, because the requirements of that time weren't as strict as the requirements they are now. So we take it as when it was created, not necessarily current today.
So is that the 585?
Or is that... Went down to that after removing the platted. There were actually 1,391 total parcels, and then it went down to 585 after he removed the ones that were platted, which means there were 806 of them already platted, regardless of the size, whether it was...
Right. If you have an acre and a half in RA, and it is already currently platted, there'd be no real incentive for you to want to... because you can do everything now that you could. So there would be no incentive to go through the rezoning process and do this corrective zoning classification.
And then the second thing that he talked about, referenced, looked at the parcels that have a residence on them. He talks about... a lot of them were built before, I guess, zoning, but obviously, as we looked at a couple of weeks ago, you know, obviously, some of them were built after zoning, because they were given a plat, and they were able to be... able to get a permit to build a house, you know, because... and just a little survey I did, I found 76 that had been given permission to build a house. And then, of course, you know, I really don't understand why somebody splits a property and didn't deed it, but they... I guess they did.
It's for tax purposes. Like, as an example, that would be if you have acreage in a conservation, and you won't want to use this piece of the property to go toward that conservation, because you might want to use it for different purposes or some reason. So you might create a survey, take it to the... there's... that's one of many different uses that people might do that for, but it does happen.
If you had the opportunity to look at what Elaine sent out to everybody, you'll see on there some that have been split out to .32, .34, .36, point, 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 a bunch of different sizes, which falls under the less than acre and a half, honestly, because if I'm looking through what she sent out, there was like... let me find my numbers, because I spent all afternoon counting those to see. I've got it on this page, or if I got it on another. Anyway, there's a little over 300. The ones that she sent out, which I guess is the whole 1,300 and some odd ones that she sent out, there's 374 that are between 1.5 acres and 4.99 that are not platted. And there's another 202 that are less than 1.5 acres that have no plat. So one of my questions to Jamison was, let's say if I owned a piece of property that had a little mobile home on it that was 1.6 acres, and I sold that to Sharon unbeknownst to her that it had never been platted, and she decided she didn't want to live in my 1973 mobile home, and she was going to build her a place on it, could she do that after buying that 1.6 acres? And the answer was?
Yes.
Because it already had a residence on it, even though it doesn't have a plat, which, you know, kind of goes back to some of the confusion that's associated with all of this.
So if you have a... if it's a mobile home or any type of structure, and it is a permanent structure, you can always do any type of renovations to it. You can remove it, do a demo permit to remove the mobile home, and then you could replace it with a house or anything in that area. Those are... those were created before zoning really came about, so we're not wanting to do anything that would hinder you on that aspect.
And then go back to the 94 parcels out of the 1,391 that don't fall into one of them categories, and go down to where he said there were 52, which leaves 42 that he is saying could be potentially zoned something else. The question was, you know, what would they be zoned to? What could they be zoned to, then? And that's a variance of stuff, because obviously, some of them are actually on Georgia 400 that are RA properties. They just never have sold, so obviously, at some point in time, somebody who owns that's going to come in here and say, "I want to zone this to a commercial piece of property." And obviously, some of them are on that side of town as well, and they could be rezoned to RSR, because they fit within the RSR category or any number of things, and he may want to go into more detail.
Generally, those... like the chairman said, there are some on 400. There's quite a few on Munkin Campground, and there's a lot between here and town... or between town and 400. And naturally, we've designated those into different zoning classifications and saying that in our future land use plan. So my recommendation, the planning department's recommendation, would be to just allow those to kind of, I guess, organically change into what they want to do. Like the ones on 400, we wouldn't go through and try to rezone those to commercial. We would wait for an investor to say, "Hey, listen, this would be the appropriate use for this area." We would evaluate that at that time.
And those people are not going to come for a rezon until they get ready to sell, because they're now paying RA property taxes versus commercial property tax. Questions for Jamison or our county attorney?
I just... no, go ahead, Commissioner.
The one you kind of hit on, conservation. So if... so if somebody had 100 acres in conservation, had a house sitting on one half, two acres, and we're going to sell the house and keep all the other 100 acres, and the rest of the 100 acres are conservation, can they sell that house?
I'm not sure I completely understand the question.
Well, if they've got 100 acres and the house sits on two of them, so they've got 98 acres in conservation.
Is it platted?
No, it's dead.
Is it platted?
It was built in the 60s.
Oh, you... this is a real situation.
They just asked me this question. It was built in the 60s.
Well, I would think you could.
They could sell...
So you're saying, you say conservation, is it under a COOVA covenant? Is that what you mean by conservation?
Yes.
Okay.
The house, like, just the land. They want to keep the land.
They want to keep the land and sell the house.
And the two acres? Or the one acre, whatever.
It depends on if the two acres is platted. The two acres isn't platted, and they came in today, and they said...
Right.
Well, if it was deeded and not platted, it would fall under...
Corrective action.
This corrective action.
Where this property's at is going to fit in this... in that 453 total, right?
Okay. So we probably... the planning department at that point, just from the information provided, probably asked them to rezon that portion of that property.
Yeah. You know, if they were to come in before this corrective action, and they had two acres, and only two acres for that home, if it's... if it is sectioned into separate parcel, which it could or could not be, depending on the House of COOVA, I mean, that's... so there's a lot more information we need to know for sure, but potentially, they could be declined, a plat and a permit, but this is what we're doing today, would just help with that. Give them an option, said.
There's a problem with conservation and then in the tax assessor's office and your office.
Well, it's just an independent process, and that's why I said we need to know more, because potentially, they never separately platted it, and they just put the two acres, and they just removed the two acres from the covenant.
That, yes.
And so then if they sold it, it would be a breach of the covenant, but that might be okay. I mean, so we just need to know a little bit more.
No, we don't want to breach covenants.
Yeah, but that's why Mr. Fossett, you're right. It's two different... like, we've prepared a map.
It is. Well, just let me tell you what got me started on some of this, and I got to thinking, I was probably the last one in the state, not just the county, to fill out my personal financial statement. And I had all my tax assessments there, so I could thumb through there and make sure I didn't leave any property out. Well, I came to one that said, "Sharon, our Fossett, one acre." And I thought, "What is that?", you know? And then it was our house and an acre, but our house is platted on a 10-acre track. So for conservation purposes, and that's where that assessment comes from, that was okay. But I called Elaine, and I said, "Now, Elaine, when you get that list of all the parcels in RA that's an acre or less than five acres, would ours have shown up?" And she said, "Yes." But see, that really wasn't accurate, because it's not a house on an acre, it's a house on 10 acres. And this is where it gets so confusing. And she said, "This is going to change." That the state wanted to exempt a house in two acres for conservation purposes. You could not have a house in two acres taxed at conservation. Well, when I was on the tax assessors board, we could choose whether we wanted to go with two acres or one. We went with one acre. So that's where... that's where it came up on us. But when you do that list, I got to thinking, well, how many other people are on that list like that? That maybe that list wasn't all that valid, because ours is just for the tax assessor's purposes. It's a house in one acre, but for all the other purposes, it's a house on 10 acres. So, I mean, that's...
And I think that's... and I think what by going down the list and kind of removing all those things, especially removing anything that's less than an acre and a half, really eliminates those properties and those anomalies from this assessment here.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that this is perfect, because there's no such thing as a data set that's perfect. There's always going to be data integrity. But we can only do the best with what we got, so...
There's obviously been some changes, I'm sure, since whatever timeframe that Elaine used to come up with 1,300 or whatever it was she came up with.
Uh-huh.
And there's been some more added to that since then, I'm sure, so, you know, trying to weedle it down to an exact number is going to be the impossibility. It will basically be most people coming to see Jamison and making their file for this corrective action based on where they're at. And of course, the dead... the drop dead date will obviously be whatever date we pass, whatever we pass.
Right. And I think that Chairman raises an important question. Now, when we spoke about this the first time, we talked about it in terms of different scenarios, a mass rezon and just fix it for everybody. Well, I think we see now the wisdom in not doing that, because there's some that are more properly and probably more desirably going to go commercial, perhaps, or like residential or some other, you know, zoning category. So I think that was a good decision, and certainly, that's validated with the new information, and this information's great. You know, I had talked about last time about whether we could have like a snapshot identification of these parcels that would be deemed eligible, which essentially, that's what Jamison now has been able to do. And I think it's somewhat comforting, because 1,300 sounds overwhelming when you think about all of these properties that may be contrary to Elaine's plan, and may be, you know, these substandard lots that you perhaps don't want to see in RA. So now, we've gotten this new information, and we know we're down to what looks like 94, you know, parcels.
Give or takes.
Give or take, yeah. And so one question I would ask again is, you know, do... I think we want to make clear, and I'm going to go back and read it with an eye towards this now that we have this new information, that these properties are eligible but not entitled or not automatically going to be rezoned to RAC, because if they come to you and you look at it, and you may say, "Well, you know, they need some kind of corrective zoning, but we think RAC is not as appropriate as perhaps commercial, because they're right on 400, and you'd rather have that..." you know, so you can still make the rezoning decision. So I don't think it's necessarily reads as if it's an automatic, but I want to go back and... because in my head, I was thinking, maybe it would be, you know, that everybody would be appropriately moved to RAC, but I don't think that's going to be the case based upon actually seeing what these parcels look like. So I think that's one thing we want to be clear. It's an eligibility, not entitlement, so they still go through a rezon process, and you still make a decision. But mindful of the fact that we're trying to give them an option to develop their property somehow, so they need to fit into one of the boxes. But do we want to include... and I don't know how confident Jamison feels of the data, but do we want to include any kind of reference to an eligibility register of parcels that's maintained by the planning department? I mean, I don't think an exhibit necessarily works that well to zoning ordinance, but do we want to have this be a snapshot, or do you feel like it's too potentially... it could be missing some or over inclusive with others?
I wouldn't want to go that far right now, because we could be missing a few. I think we've got most of them. I think we're close, but I don't want to leave anybody out.
My Jamison said that 97 really...
That he's going to come and file another complaint, because they just get the change.
For some of them...
Well, I thought we said 52.
Yeah.
I saw 52 somewhere.
Fifty-two, he said, would be RA 1.5, but there's another 40 that he...
Forty-two.
Forty-two that he's saying could fit somewhere else, and there may be another three or four somewhere out there that has happened, that nobody knows.
If somebody had to be commercial, then that's going to be up to them to come in there.
Yeah. And they're not going to come until they want to do commercials, anyway.
That's right. Right. So I think it's...
But you're going to have some people that are in RA on the east side that may want to give their kid three acres of land, they're going to come and have that changed to RSR, because they can, because it's RSR and the future land use map. It's not RA and the future land use map down on, you know...
Some of that Pittsburgh map.
Yeah.
Right. And so if they came in, and they're less than five acres, but they're three, and it fits our future land use plot, we may say, "We prefer you to be this," and this is what we're rezoning to. So we would still have those discretionary decisions.
And I think you're going to have, you know... that's going to be fine with people, as long as they have the opportunity to be rezoned into some usable thing for their property, so that they don't have three acres of property that's not working.
Exactly.
So, but I think they're going to be fine with that, because regardless of what they decide they want to rezon it to. Plus, it keeps it pretty much area specific as well. It kind of keeps it in the area that you really want it to be in to begin with, so that works out. But I wouldn't want to set a specific number in that, because we don't know what that specific number is, and we're going to find another two, I'm sure, at some point in time. We find out new stuff every time we dig, and so I wouldn't want to do that.
I agree with Chairman, and just to echo that, if we were to do some type of exhibit or kind of a list that kind of goes along with this, I would do it with the caveat, if we were to do it with the caveat that, you know, upon further investigation, there may be other parcels, but like I said before, that integrity is everything. So we're getting a snapshot, but there's always going to be one or two out there that we just... we didn't see for some law.
Well, it might be worthy of a reference to an eligibility register that, you know, that could... you know, someone could have the ability to come and prove otherwise, but so you don't have to do this every time someone comes in six months from now or two years from now, and you're not, you know, whatever, then you wouldn't have to look it up. It would be, okay, if you hear you are on this list, I mean, I don't know, just something to think about.
Now, are you referring to like the fact that they come in and then just apply to the planning department, and I say, "Oh, hey, listen, you're on this list?"
Yeah.
"We can go ahead and make that change administratively?"
Yeah. Oh, well, no, not making administrative change, but just know whether they're eligible to file an application.
Okay.
So if someone comes in with an application, unless they're one of these substandard parcels at the time that we adopt this ordinance, because remember, we said we're going to cut it off, because we're changing the ordinance now to be clear that it's a five acre minimum. So there's no more whoops, you know? It's clear now.
I didn't know.
I didn't know. No more "I didn't know." And so that being able to prove that they had that substandard existing on the date we would prove the ordinance is something that, you know, I hate for you to have to research every time an application comes. It might be easy next week, because you got this document, but it might not be easy two years from now, three years from now, or five years from now. So that was my only thought, is whether we had something that was a little more, I'm calling it an eligibility register. And it may just be something that y'all informally did, Jamison, in your office, and you know that you maintain it, so that you have almost like checklist. You have a whole application you can check and...
To be a part of a reference. You got a reference.
I'm sure he's not going to get rid of that after he did all that work.
Yes. Well, no, I mean, but I think there... yeah, and so maybe you don't want to mention the ordinance, but I think it's important that it has some continuity going forward, because it, you know, you've got some expectation now that it's this many lots and, you know...
There might be just a few more, yes.
So the only other thing that I would ask for some input on, and I know I've gotten some comments from the Chairman, but in the draft that was sent out on Friday, you have some highlighted areas in yellow that I just want to call your attention to in terms of uses. Like, for instance, under the first section C, and you may be fine just the way it is, but it provides still that customary and essential accessory uses could include barns and livestock structures. So you may not be prepared to make a call on those things today, but just need to consider in the prohibited uses, which is under D, which I think somehow it looks like it's under B, unless I'm not seeing it well. So we'll have to make sure the number is correct. But prohibited, we have prohibited raising and carrying for livestock, and we just need some input on that. You know, so if the lot has reduced down to size under five acres, does that change for you what you feel like they should be permitted to do in RA? Maybe it doesn't. I think the Chairman's position is no difference, no changes. Everything would be the same. But if you have any concerns that if it's a smaller lot, then noise and odor and things like that, that otherwise might be encompassed in a five acre lot, now it's not, is that a concern? And we address that also in highlighting like the setbacks, if you have any interest in those changes. And the only other thing I'll call to your attention is just what is an available special use. For instance, in the permitted use table, the dog or cat breeding kennel, you know, that was allowed to continue into RAC. I mean, I don't know if there's a special use or a special particular situation we know about with one of those, but that's typically a fairly intensive use. If that's on a 1.5 acre, I don't know if you're concerned about that. And the only other than single-family residential that jumped out at me was bed and breakfast, and if that's a concern. And it may not be. I just wanted to make sure y'all had those in mind. So we just need to know whether it's only single-family residential, like we're doing this curative so you can build a house and put a house there, and then maybe all the accessory, including livestock or not. Are you fine if it's dog and cat kennel and bed and breakfast? Those are the only two that staff has put in that are just a little different than, "I just want to build my house." And we're trying to help you get Bill to build your house. So I just would say, go back and look at the yellow highlighting and just consider if you... how you feel about those things. And if we can get direction on that before we put out the ad, because if you intend to allow livestock, then we want to make that change and, you know, just clean it up so people don't get upset about something, if that's not what y'all intend.
Well, I don't think you could do a dog and cat kennel. How many acres are you talking about?
Well, potentially, it would be from 1.5 to 4.9999. So, and maybe it's something that, you know, you want to consider as a special use. I mean, if they have five plus... or four plus acres, then maybe it's okay. If it's a 1.5, maybe it's not.
I would like to see that. Exactly. People coming in complaining it's flappy, they only have an acre and a half or two acres. The neighbors complaining about the noise or...
But that's when you... that's when you need to do your due diligence, to see what is allowed. That's why we've gotten so much of this.
Yeah.
You know, people really getting...
And Jamison's right. It's a special use, I'm sorry. So, yeah, it is a special use. It's not of rights, so they would have to specifically ask for the dog and the cat breeding.
They would have to ask for it, apply with an application, and we would notify the neighbors, and we'd have a public hearing.
Okay. So that's the answer to it.
And there's some guidelines.
And it is, unless you don't want to make it available at all, because whenever you make something available, you know, we need to have a criteria and explain what is a needed criteria, or we can determine we don't think it's an appropriate use.
Yeah. I guess the question to be answered would be, to me, anyway, the question would be, I know we have some cat and dog kennels already.[1794.54] be, I know we have some cat and dog kennels already, what are they on, what acres are they currently on? Can you find that out, Jameson? Can you see, because I can take you up 183 and a few other places, and there's two or three up that way?
Yes.
What acres are they on today?
And you might want to go with that number.
Yeah, so say, what are they on? And the reason I don't think that we should even look at changing what's already NRA in reference to setbacks, is all you're going to do is create a bunch of variance requests.
That's right.
Because there may be only so much buildable property even on an acre and a half. If you start saying that the buffer is getting bigger and bigger and bigger, then you're going to have them eat up with variance requests. And I don't know about y'all, but I don't like variances, I like for it to be straight up. And so we've got different requirements already, whether it's on a state highway, whether it's on a county road, and with those buffers and things like that. And so I would say that, me personally, I wouldn't support changing that because that's just going to create more problem.
Well, that's right, and again, the, the whole impetus behind this is those people who believe they can do it with the 1.5 because of some confusing language and the ordinance arguably, and seeing their neighbors do it, well, if we're trying to give them what the person next door or across the street got, then if we add additional standards, then we've not done that exactly. So if it's purely just correcting to their expectations, then it would be exactly like RA. So it was just, I know some of y'all had some concerns about the smaller lots, so I just wanted to inject that in the conversation, but if we want to give them what they think they have, then we really wouldn't make any changes.
When you go back to talking about a barn or an outbuilding, I mean, build a barn or an outbuilding on an acre and a half, it not be a, still got to follow the setbacks, still got to stay off setbacks, and it's got, we already got limitations on how big it can be, it'll only be a certain size based on the house. And so, and then even if you go to, if you talk about livestock, it's not like I'm going to have a, a 20 pig farm on an acre and a half, can't, be impossible to do, unless you want to spend a whole lot of money on feed. And not too many people are going to buy feed trying to make money off of a pig sale. So, I mean, for somebody to have one cow or one pig or, and the problem with it's going to be, in my opinion, if you try to get too deep into this thing, how are you going to enforce it anyway? I mean, he ain't got the manpower to run over and see if Sharon's got two cows, or one, or 10, on an acre and a half lot. I mean, it'd all be the plate driven anyway. So, more likely, if you're talking about the 52 homes that he found, or 52 potential, they're stuck out in the middle of cows and pigs and horses and all the things anyway. It's all around them. So, I mean, you know, you could have an acre and a half lot that you own next to a 100 acre pasture with 100 heading, so. For them to have one next to the 100, you know, to me, is not that big of deal.
You know, this just underscores the importance of when you are looking for property, just don't buy it first and then find out what you can do, know as much as you can what you want to do with it, and make sure that it is allowed on that piece of property. And that's why we've got all this mess here. And I mean, it may not be in Dawson County, you may have to go to one county, you may have to go to another county, but it is all about due diligence. And then also environmental health plays into some of this, does it not?
It does.
So, you know, I'm going to throw in another wrench to this. I don't think when you're going to buy, you can't, and now me, I, I go to conservation because I don't want to reach conservation, I go to the tax assessor's office, but not only, you can go down there and ask them, and they'll say, yes, you can, you can build on, you know, this acre and a half, but for your purposes, that may not be true for environmental health, that may not be true. So you've got several, you can't, I don't think we can just do one stop shop.
Well, that's the thing we talked about before, is we've got to get everybody on the same page.
Yes, yes, we do.
Because environmental, if you talk about environmental health, you talk about them, obviously you're talking about a perp test.
Yeah.
We'll let perp for a second time.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, obviously that is something you should do before you buy the property, and as I've said to some of y'all, and I've said to other people, I'd also hire me one of them people who walks around with them little water heater to do.
Yes.
Find out if there's any water on that property before I bought it too, especially if I'm going to build over that one, because you might buy a five acre tract or a 10 acre tract and not have a drop.
That's right.
And so then what would you do? So, I mean, there's, there's a lot to that, and, and essence with what we're talking about here and this corrective action too, is we've got to put out some more educational material.
We do.
To educate our citizens better. I mean, and that falls on us getting some stuff out there, and I think we're going to work with Laura on that, get that done, so that people have a better idea. And we're going to fix the confusion in the 1.5 slash 5, which when people get online, which some of them said they did and read, that was their interpretation.
Yes.
And if you read it, it kind of looks that way. It looks like that, well, you know, if I've got an acre and a half, then I can do something with it. And so we need, we're going to clean that up as well, but that goes back to what we talked about for a very long time, is cleaning up this stuff that's 25 years old. I mean, when you pass something other that hasn't been updated since 1998, and you've had even just moderate growth, you're going to have a problem. So the fact that we're now cleaning this up to the point where hopefully over the next 10 or 15 years, there won't be as much discrepancy in it, or it won't be, I guess a good lawyer term, it won't be great, where it can be read nine ways to some, because that's what happens on a lot of this stuff, it's all in, it's all in the person reading it. Because I guarantee you, this young lady right here can tell you that she can give the same thing to four lawyers and they probably won't read it to some. Probably all say something different in the end. So we've got to try to clean it up as best we can and make it as clear as we possibly can.
All right, now this is just for stuff that's existing now? It's not going to be like people.
As of the date, we pass whatever we pass.
Okay, so people still got time to come in here and buy our property and say we're going to?
You know, I don't think a lot of that's going to happen.
Okay, but, but they could, okay.
Well, I mean, they're not going to have a whole lot of time unless we duly adapt it.
That's right, well, let's not duly adapt.
To do that, so. All right, any other questions for Jameson or council?
Thank you. The 1300 was a sticker shock to us that we thought we were going to have a lot of big problem, and to go down to 97 and probably 50 something, that's a good job, your staff.
Did a good job, still got to understand all the breakdown of it, you know, where there's still a lot out there that's going to confuse people.
Yes.
They're going to be very confused, we got to make sure they understand that it's already got a rez that's on it, don't matter if it's acre and a half. They can build on it if they take the 73 model trailer off of it. It's already platted, they can do something regardless of what the acreage of it is. Those are the things that we got to make people understand going forward, is the fact that, you know, yes, there's a whole bunch of these, but there's a, a whole bunch of factors associated in it as well, that everybody needs to have an understanding of. So that's got to be part of the publicity portion of it, where people understand that, you know, if you buy this 1.6 acres from me and it already had the trailer on it, you can do something with it, even though it ain't been platted, even though it's just had a house on it, it's never been platted, I've owned it for 50 years.
It's grandfathering, so there's grandfathering going on.
So, you know, people have to understand all of that, so that's where the problem comes in, when there's not enough education and not enough understanding, when they see 10 people do the same thing that they want to do, and then it's kind of hard for them to understand why they can't. So we have to make that.
It's still, it's still due diligence.
Oh, it is, but.
I mean, responsibility.
There's a lot to that. Any other questions?
We're going to move this to tonight.
No, we moved for, moved to a vote, to vote, our vote would be to go to a public hearing.
I think so.
And have we given you enough leeway on the rest?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, we will do that, we'll move that to the voting session to move it to a public hearing, so that, which would be plan commission first, and then to the commission later on. All right, we'll move on to new business. First up, we have presentation of Legacy Link FY 2020 New Direction Program Services Contract, Senior Services Director Donald Prue. Donald?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board of Commissioners, I'm here to present with you the FY 2021 Legacy Link Contract. This is for, our year begins July the 1st with them, runs a different cycle than our normal year with the county, and is for our federal and state funding for meals served to senior clients, our daily management, and also for our respite care. And as you can see, the funding there that we will get for the current year is basically in line like it is every year, and at times we will bring additions or amendments to you where they give us more money usually instead of taking away if they see what's left over the course of the year. And we've received, this was mailed out on the 22nd of June, Kristen received it, I think on the 24th, and immediately contacted me, and we went ahead and sent the paperwork in to get it on this meeting, so we will need to ratify to get it back in. If we can do that, they were late getting it to us because of their timeframe and with COVID issues, and they asked us to get it back as soon as possible. So if we could get this to tonight, I think that would be great.
Questions for Donald? Okay, we'll move on?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Next up, we have discussion of efficiency studies through the University of Georgia, Carl Benson Institute of Government. As you remember, we met with the city council in reference to SQUASH 7, and one of the things we talked about was doing the efficiency study with a third party, see how we could make sure that were no duplication of spending, especially in the SQUASH and any other thing that we're doing jointly. And so, Chris, you with us?
Hi, yeah, yeah, I'm here, can everybody hear me?
Yes, go ahead, I think you had four things you'd like to talk about.
So, yeah, I thought we had a great meeting the other day, and it focused on the idea of efficiency, and how we can work better together with multiple organizations throughout the community, and they could help everybody. And so, in, in my mind, there's really four questions that, that I would propose that we answer today, I mean, or put on the table for us to discuss and answer at some point. Number one is, do we want to look at an efficiency study? Do we want to look and see what it looks like, and we want to look and see if there's the ability to conduct one? I think there is. I've done a little bit of research with Melissa, and they've engaged Carl Benson before me, and they have the ability to do these things, but, number one, do we want to do it? Number two would be, what entities would be a part of it? And in my mind, it would be us, it would be the city, and it would be Edelwater, because they play a big factor and a big role in service delivery. And then number three would be, I mean, a pursuit of who do we want to do it? I think Carl Benson, again, is a, a good organization, because they, they deal with GMA, they deal with CGPG, and I believe they can bring a non-political, non-partisan viewpoint that's fair and equitable to everybody. And so all I'd add is, and then, number four, we need to discuss the scope of it, you know, is there anything that we don't want put on the table, or is there anything that, you know, we really want to focus on? No, we have to define the scope for whatever organization we use, such as Carl Benson. And in terms of how we're having to have, I would love to see us be able to move forward and show the community that we're trying to do all we can to be the most efficient we can.
Do we know anything about the cost of such a study?
I, I don't have any cost here, I think we would need to define, I think we need to define how wide a scope it is and what we want them to look at. So I think the next step would be for us to decide if we want to proceed with getting a cost, but we have to define, just like we would if we wanted to go get a bid for a, a, a new truck, we got to define what we're looking for first.
And then would each of the other people, the city and the?
Not anymore.
Then would the city and the, and Edelwater share the cost?
I think we would ask the city.
Yeah, I think all entities, I already talked to Edelwater, and he's willing to hear the cost as well. I mean, the reality is, if we can find an efficiency in our operations and the city's operations, the Edelwater operations, I'm confident that it's going to pay for itself. And I said the other day, worst case scenario, they come back and say you're bringing the most efficient you can, and, and that allows us to solidify, you know, the operations that we've been conducting, but I'm pretty confident we're going to find some, some efficiency.
Chris, why, why involve Edelwater? This is not a criticism, but why's the?
Yeah, so Edelwater, you know, manages water and sewer, the city manages water and sewer, that's not something that we particularly have any engagement in, but, you know, an example I brought up for the day is, you know, one of the SQUASH projects that the city has is a, almost a $10 million wastewater treatment plant, and if there's an option for Edelwater and the city to work together better, then I think that's why they need to have a fee to pay for this, because that can make a big difference in efficiency.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion?
Which also, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll move on from, or I'll elaborate more on that, Chairman, if there's an efficiency, like for instance, in the SQUASH, you know, if, if they do realize that maybe they don't need this $9 million expenditure, that's something that could be utilized for us potentially to have a, a newer ambulance, where we can reallocate the funds to things that better benefit the community as a whole.
Yeah. Yes.
That would allow, if that was the case, obviously that would allow the city as well, as we talked about the other day, to help us fund some of those things with some of their SQUASH dollars that everybody gets a benefit from.
Yes.
And not just a certain group, but everybody would get a benefit from a new ambulance or a new fire truck, or depending on that, especially, you know, the ones that cover exclusively the city and things like that, so that would give free up some money that they could reallocate to make all the money go for, for more things. Other discussion. I think it's a good thing to, you know, for us, in my personal opinion, it's a good thing for this board to take a look at, take a vote on in a couple of weeks, be thinking through what some of the scope of work would be, be ready to take a vote whether we move forward or not in reference to that, so that, like the city, hopefully they'll, obviously have to take it up at one of their meetings as well, hopefully if they see that we're moving ahead with it, that they will as well. And I don't think there's any citizen that's a taxpayer that doesn't want us to be as efficient as we can be with their money, regardless of where that money comes from. Whatever, whatever pocket that it comes out of, we need to be as efficient as possible, and that doesn't matter which government agency that you are a part of. So I think it's a good thing, and I think that we work on over the next couple of weeks what that scope would be, and then hopefully by then, you know, we can talk about it some more in reference to finding out what the cost is to that as well, we can have some more discussion with the other entities, see where they stand, what they're willing to do.
Has anybody spoken to the city since we had our meeting? Because I, you know, Chris brought this up, has he ever spoken to them further about it?
I've spoken more to Frank, and he was definitely in agreement with, you know, the idea of what's, the first step is, let's just see what the study looks like, I mean, this is, it's just taken one step towards the process, in the process, and so, Mark said he would be willing to, to get in on their amendment perhaps in the session, and I think collectively, it's not just us that comes up with the scope of work, I think it's all three entities that come together and say, this is what we would like to see in a, in a scope of work for the efficiency study, and then from their comments that would bring us up, I would assume a proposal back and say, this is what the cost is, and then we would have the ability then to decide, yes, let's proceed, or, or, you know, no, we don't, we don't, we don't want to proceed with it.
I think we're, I think we're at a point where we as a board would decide. I think we're, I think we're at a point where we as a board would decide in a couple of weeks in a vote that we want to move ahead with the efficiency study. Hopefully, the city will put that on their agenda, the Edelwars will put that on their agenda. If all three entities vote to move ahead with it, then collectively, as Chris says, we could come up with a scope of work where at that particular time, we could maybe take a couple of commissioners and a couple of city council and a couple of people off of their board that could work on that scope, to get a scope put together that we could send the Carl Benson Institute and get a quote.
It wouldn't be like a special call meeting that everybody would be?
No, I mean, we could do a special call meeting, but I think just trying to generate a scope, you know, we could just get, you know, get some people in the room and they take feedback from the whole group, obviously, whatever group they're representing. And we could get things done much faster that way and get to a point anyway where we can find out if there's, if there are efficiencies that will help make the money go further. Other discussion in reference to that. All right, thank you. We'll move on to county manager report, David.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Good afternoon to you. As you know, with the continuing COVID situation, we are re-implementing staggered work schedules for employees within our administrative offices. It's going to begin on Monday, July the 6th, and we're going to go through to at least the middle of this month, hopefully, we get a chance to see where things are going from there. So it'll be the same, pretty much the same work schedules that we had before this. A reminder that the county offices will be closed tomorrow, July the 3rd, and observance of the 4th of July holiday, and hope you all obviously have a safe, safe weekend. Currently, the National Guard has no plans to reopen the Rock Creek Testing Center. I know I spoke before a week ago that they were going to. Now they decided they're not going to. But we're still waiting on a reply from the Augusta University. I suspect they probably will follow suit and not open the testing site just from a static standpoint. Don't know if they have that. They certainly have been on the National Guard and provided that before. So anyway, that really concludes my report.
Questions for the county manager?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. County attorney report?
No public report, but I have a question in executive session tonight.
Okay. All right, so with that, that concludes our work session agenda. Appreciate your attendance. We will take a few minutes to give staff opportunity to set up for our voting session and then we'll move into that. Thank you.